Council, committee of the whole work session meeting for Thursday, October 18th, 2018 will please come to order and the clerk will call the roll.
Calling the roll, Ms. Simon. Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Ms. Baker? Ms. Baker is absent at the moment. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Tuma?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Sharon?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Present.
Mr. Jones? Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Hauser is absent at the moment. We have a quorum. Oh, sorry. Counsel President Brady?
Present.
We have a quorum.
Okay, thank you very much. Has anybody signed in for public comment?
No, no one has signed in.
Okay, we're gonna move right on to the first and only item of the day, which is the ERP update from our consultant Zig Bursons. I would mention to everybody that Zig has a hard stop at 12:30 because 15 minutes later, he will be picked up by Uber and taken to the airport and has to fly to Colorado. So we will be done by 12:30. Please begin.
So, good morning. Good morning. I'm here to discuss the October-
Zig, excuse me. Zig, can you press the microphone?
How about that one?
There you go.
Good morning. I'm here to talk about the October report. So as I have been doing, I try to give you some of the good news up front. And what I'll do is I'll go through some of the summary types of things, then we'll get into the details of the report. You know, the key, I think, on the good news side is that the enterprise asset management component, which reflects and uses work orders, is still moving along fine. By the end of October, that should be completely rolled out to the facilities, which is the last major piece for work orders that needs to be accomplished. And that's moving along just as planned, and that's doing great. So they continue to be the stars, leading the pack in this project. Core HR and benefits was planned to be prepared for open enrollment. Open enrollment's gonna start. They're doing a sort of a soft beginning, but that's okay. You know, I think the key thing to recognize, and that's they are tracking exactly how many people are validating their data and how many are accessing the system. And the bottom line on this is rather than paying attention to all the details in here is in the left-hand column, it says 96% of the people have actually gotten into the system and have gotten their data validated, which is great. And so very shortly, we will have people literally beginning the open enrollment process as planned. So I think that's excellent news. We do have some disappointing news. I mean, and I think we talked about this last month, that, you know, really having some difficulties and some struggles and challenges with workforce management, which is the time clocks. And so everybody came to the conclusion that we're really not going to be able to get workforce management to run at the end of December. And if that happens, then you can't do payroll, and so on and on. You get into what you heard on Monday from the team, which is in essence, they have now rescheduled and replanned the project because of that. They have been able to continue down the path of bringing general ledger up at the end of the year, which is again, a good news kind of a statement. So that when you get your financials at the end of January, you will get them from the N4 general ledger. You will, in essence, then be using the N4 general ledger as the system of record for the county. And that's a good piece of news. And it also means that the general ledger's in place for the rest of the system, which makes an awful lot of sense from a structuring and sequencing perspective, that the foundation, the account numbers and everything like that are in place as you go forward adding the other pieces of the system. Some concerning news, and, you know, we've talked about this quite a few times, and there's still some operating expenses that are being included in the project spending plan that probably should be moved out and classified as operating. The numbers are not as large as they were six months ago because the project has stretched out. I mean, stretched out quite a bit from about six months ago. So we just need to recognize that. There continues to be this confusion about who should be actually developing and managing and reporting budget performance on the project, whether it should continue to be the DOIT organization or whether it should be the OBM organization. That continues to be a question. The spending plan, we just need to recognize that it also does not include, does not include the time of non-IT personnel who are working on the project. And from a point of view of capital planning, capital budgeting, capital spending, you know, that time actually should be part of that. Okay? So that continues to sit out there and not be acknowledged. So let's talk about the project condition. On the whole, it's actually, I think, improved based on some of these changes. There are better opportunities for success. Okay? And if you recall, this is the kind of the layout. We tried to show you what was the functionality and all the various components of the system in order for you to kind of see and understand the complexity and the variability. The other thing we talked about earlier is we talked about the great number of tables that, in essence, need to be configured. Thought it might make some sense for you to see that this is a complex endeavor. You know, there are scores of modules. Scores being 20, so there's more than 20 modules. Scores of enhancements and modifications, so you've got about 50 right now. There are thousands of tables. We're talking about 15,720 tables that have been configured and are yet to be configured. Okay? So it's quite a bit. Number of interfaces, depends on how you count. Still, it's scores of interfaces. Number of conversions, same type of thing. Number of standard reports that have been provided to me and reported to me by N4 is that this entire system has 3,000 standard reports. Got to figure out how to use them. Okay? The estimate is about 1,000 queries will probably be used on this system, or 4,000, excuse me. And the number of forms is about 2,500. Okay? Forms being the layout of something on a screen. Here's the list of the N4 modules. Again, it's a reminder that there's quite a bit in this system. It's not just, when you have a tendency to think about, oh, it's the fiscal portion of the system, there are a lot of modules in there. And when you think in terms of this is the global HR portion of the system, there are a lot of modules in there. Okay? So what's been the progress? And I've basically said, let's look at it since the very beginning. That's approximately 20 months. Okay, about 20 months. So Public Works has rolled out work orders. That's great news. Okay? But I've emboldened for you here a couple of the line items to remind us that there are still some things that need to be done for work orders. Okay? We still need to connect the system to the financial system. All right? So that you can sit there and pass asset information, so you can pass billing information. So there's a piece there. There's also a tremendous amount of reporting that goes with work order management, and that hasn't been finalized yet. So there's still some work over the next few months that they will be focusing on. Human Resources has rolled out, as we've said, is a big piece that hasn't been accomplished yet, and that is the fact that we're gonna start open enrollment next week. But right now, the system is still in the process of trying to test the feeds of the benefit selections to the benefit providers. So those interfaces, if you will, have yet to be completely tested. And that's still to be done. That's targeted to, you know, be done by, I believe, late November, which is fine. That fits, that works. But we just need to recognize that it's there. You can't say everything is perfect and everything is done. Make sense? So I just wanted to kind of look at this list of modules. Again, we're back to how much has actually been implemented versus what's left. Okay? So after 20 months, we basically have said, two groupings of modules have been implemented, three, excuse me. And I thought it might make some sense to look at this list of modules and say, well, how easy, how hard is each module going to be to implement? So I just arbitrarily said, you know, evaluated them and said, okay, this is an easy one, this is a medium one, this is a hard one. I assigned a number, said, okay, easy is one, medium is two, hard is three. So literally, I could come up with an equivalent number of modules. So down there at the bottom, I've generated this equivalency number of modules of being 50, not 24, 50. Okay? So we have actually put in three modules by using this equivalent module calculation. I come up with 4.5. Equivalent modules have been implemented. Well, that's less than 10% of the total. So the message is, yes, we've got work ongoing, yes, we've got things happening, but I think everybody needs to recognize that we've still got about 90% of these modules to roll out. That make sense? Equivalent modules. Okay? There's a lot of work still out there. And right now, great, you know, we've replanned, we've given ourselves more time, but even that is 12 months to get the rest of it done. Okay? So I wanted to talk a little bit about the fact that it's a good thing that people are now starting to really openly drive at tracking the various RICE items. RICE items being reports, interfaces, conversions, and enhancements. Okay? So this is an example. This is what the financial team is doing, and it's just there to show you how many RICE items are in play, where, the fact that they're tracking them, the fact that they're paying attention, are they in development, are they being tested and so forth, and who's on the hook to do them. Okay? But, you know, notice that interfaces to be designed and developed and tested for the fiscal team is 119, according to this chart. It's not inconsequential. Not inconsequential. So what's left to do, again, as a recap, about 90% of the solution remains to be implemented. From a calendar perspective, we did 10% in 20 months, and we got 12 months left to do the 90. Now, are the 90 in play? Are they pretty far along? Quite a few of them? Of course, that's the case. But there's a lot of parts that have to connect now, a lot of parts. So from a success perspective, it is now time for the county, particularly the non-IT personnel, to be all in. So for months now, we've been talking about the fact that the non-IT personnel are not necessarily being fully dedicated to the project. So you're getting a lot of this part-time kind of thing, and that's making it a little difficult to get some of these things accomplished. It's now time for them to be all in. It's now time to sit there and designate the, if you're gonna be a team leader of that particular group, great, you ought to be there 32 hours a week. Not 16, not 8, 32 hours a week. Okay?
Okay, I'm gonna note that Ms. Baker and Counselman Hauser have joined the meeting and ask if there are any questions up to this point. Counselman Shawn.
Zig, all of that is forecasted, what you just indicated, based on the individuals on board. And you also were throwing out a challenge to make sure the non-IT people got fully engaged. What impact, if any, would it be if we lost people, if they went and took different jobs and they left the county, and people that need to get, that are up to speed, that are not here? I mean, I just found out, we just heard this a few days ago, that on the financial side, the investing had been delegated to an individual to be the Treasury's point of contact. Well, we just got notice that that person is no longer here, and that was the person who was leading this sector. What impact does it have when you start losing key people in major parts to that schedule?
There's no question that, you know, there's a risk of that. And that's a risk that's actually going to affect the organization and the project team from all three components. In other words, there's a risk that you've got a lot of invested time and energy in the consultants. So you really are trying, hopefully, to not have turnover there. But, you know, many of those consultants are subcontractors, you know? So that was one of the reasons why N4 was very anxious to get this stuff squared away and make sure they get the approvals on their change orders so that they can commit with their subcontractors. I mean, so that's something to pay attention to. Same kind of thing with the technology personnel. You've got invested time in those folks, and so you want to try to, of course, minimize that turnover condition. And then if that affects the non-IT folks, it's just there, it's a matter of have they, do they have the invested time and knowledge and learning and understanding of the system? If they do, then there's certainly a risk that you lose that. But if they have only been involved on a cursory basis, the risk is not as huge. Does that make sense?
It does. And I have no idea what this person, but this was the head guy on the finance and investing side of the aisle, and we were, I think, under the impression that from the Treasury side, that this was the head guy doing IT. I mean, doing the ERP for this sector. Attrition-
If I may, let me expand on that just a little bit.
Yeah.
If you need the knowledge of that individual of what's going on today, you know, that means that if you've got a particular component of the system that is later on in the timeline, then you're gonna, it's gonna be important for that person to provide knowledge of what's going on today because you're gonna get into the designing aspects of the things that are downline. The things that are going on soon, general ledger and that sort of thing, the design is done. So you don't need as much knowledge of what's going on today as opposed to you need to understand the way the system's configured.
Well, attrition-
There's more risk-
Yeah.
-out there, like, for instance, expense management and contracts. They're out there in August. If they're out there in August, you're gonna still be doing design work. And so if you lose those folks, Treasury is in April, I believe. Okay? So if you still need design work and you don't have that individual, then all of a sudden, that whole activity could get pushed a little bit, like maybe by a month. Okay? For Treasury. That would be the risk that you're faced with. Probably not as much for something out there in August because there's time for a replacement person to gain the knowledge of how things are done internally so they can provide the design work.
But of course, you gotta find that replacement person.
Absolutely.
You gotta get that person up to speed. That's probably at least a minimum of three months by the time you go out and-
And as soon as that happens, there's this potential that those backend activities get pushed even further out.
Yeah. Because attrition, people leaving, going someplace else, all those things are, they're just part of the normal course of running any organization. Do you know if those have been factored into the timeline, or is it an assumption that we're never gonna have anybody leave, and that everybody's gonna be here right to the 11th hour and gonna be here to flick the switch? Because that's not gonna happen. That doesn't happen in any organization.
Yeah. I have not seen anything from the team that indicates that they have thought through and have actually included turnover, loss of time based on turnover. I have not seen that.
Is that something that makes sense to build into a factor for that?
I think it would make sense if you've got a significant hiccup in your project schedule. In other words, if there would have been a hiccup with N4, it's a strong possibility that they would have lost some of their consultants with the knowledge of the system. Strong possibility. If you do a, one of my past clients literally did a pause in the project, and when they did that pause, it cost them, they took three months with that pause, but then there was another three months to ramp back up, and they lost, they did lose people, and they did have to plan for that.
Thank you. Counsel President.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Zig, back on page three, under what you call concerning news, fourth item down, it talks about the Department of Information Technology. Spending plan continues to omit capitalization charges for the non-IT county personnel who work on the project. Could you expound on the implications of that point?
Sure. I have looked at their details. I mean, and they have made an effort to identify the resources that are non-IT resources that are supposed to be working on the project. But they, it's not complete. They have not received the commitments and the involvement, you know, to the extent that they should, from the various departments and organizations that are providing support for this project. So therefore, they don't have the numbers. It's relatively incomplete. But, you know, therefore, neither I nor they can come up with it and say, what's the number? You know, I mean, you know, as soon as you have the number of FTE, you can multiply by some kind of a rate per hour, or per day, or per month, or whatever the case you may be. And you can certainly multiply it out and say it's gonna come out to a number. It's going to be sizable. I mean, it's gonna be multiples of 100,000. I can make that guess.
Okay.
But that's about as far as I think I can go.
All right. Well, that was really the question. How, you know, how significant is this? You chose to enter this and draw our attention to it, so I wanted to know how significant it is.
It's multiples of 100,000.
All right. Thank you.
Typically, it's gonna offset some of the other things.
That's more than two.
That's more than two.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Baker.
Yes, you talked about the concern of those employees that may or may not stay, and corrections that happened because of that. But we've already seen the delay. Now we're at July, I believe, of next year before payrolls rolled out. So, you know, the risk of making sure that it's implemented correctly, that risk has been lowered because of the time. But we've also perhaps raised the risk of keeping everyone in place to make sure we can meet that deadline. Would you support the decision that was made to delay this project till July? And, you know, in talking with those that are leading this project, they feel very, very confident that that 90% that you indicate has yet to be rolled out are close and in play and will be achieved. Are you there with them on that?
Yes. I was in the meeting where the team got together and talked about how to restructure and how, you know, how far out we should pull, move things, and where we have conflicts. So I heard all that, and I agree with it. I agree with, you know, the schedule from the point of view that it makes this whole thing much more makeable, achievable, if you will. So, but by the same token, what I was trying to do by saying, oh, there's a lot to do, is that there's been a historical lack of full-time commitment. And so the message becomes, okay, it's makeable, it's doable, lot of moving parts, lot of pieces have to now connect, gotta get more commitment, gotta get more commitment, gotta have the team leader, team leaders as an absolute minimum, I think, have got to be committed 32 hours a week. And I use that number because I recognize there's gonna be some other things going on. But 32 hours a week, four days a week, the team leaders, all of them. And they need, literally, literally, just, that's all they work on. Otherwise, because what's gonna be happening now over the next six months is we're gonna have this tremendous amount of testing going on. That requires the internal personnel. I mean, N4's gonna sit there and say, we've done our work, you know, we're here to help you. Gotta do it.
If I may follow, so I would expect that what we'll hear from you, given this is a high priority, you will keep us informed as to the level of commitment and focus on keeping on task to make sure we meet those deadlines.
You bet. Because I will be, I will be looking at those spreadsheets that are now, have a lot of line items that are blank. Where are the numbers? You know, the team needs to get that information in there. So yes, I will.
Okay, please proceed.
Sure. Well, you know, we just wanted to comment on the fact we're replanning again. I think you have seen all of this, so we won't spend a lot of time on it. I think we all now understand that the replanning says payroll is gonna go in on July 1. You know, but, you know, I also thought maybe it would make sense, because I haven't heard anybody ask the question, which is, okay, we've had two years now, so why are we replanning again? And so I've kind of given you some thoughts down there. There has been shuffling in N4's management. That's going to affect it. Okay? We've already talked about the fact inadequate county staffing levels. And inadequate in the sense of commitment of time, not necessarily skill, knowledge, and so forth. Elongated deliverable approval times. We've talked about that. It's gotten much better. But there were times when I first got here that literally it was taking a month to get something approved. That's gonna drag things out. Elongated cash versus accrual design decision, that took almost a year, almost a year, constantly going back and forth about, are we gonna go accrual, are we gonna go cash? And N4 is going, ah, which way we want to design the system. Okay? It's resolved, but it took a while. There were some design surprises, and I think we talked about some of those earlier. Certainly, you know, the whole issue of, well, wait a minute, how many work order, I mean, how many work rules do we have, and how many, you know, collective bargaining unit documents do we have to sit there and create all those various combinations, that sort of thing? And then we had timeliness of N4 personnel. We talked about that one, where the workforce management time clocks, the workforce management person didn't get here for a couple of months. And so that created a delay, and they've never been able to catch up. Okay?
And I'm gonna add, there were too many rollouts scheduled too close together in time.
That's right. That's right. Thank you. Because in the beginning, there was, in fact, I even showed you a chart where all those were hitting at once, if you recall. So now it is reasonably spread, and that's good news. You saw this particular chart. It was presented to you Monday. This was the way that the fiscal team was restructuring. I just thought there were some things that you probably wanted to realize or pay attention to that are in addition to what they did. So down at the very bottom, I wanted to remind everybody that we still have some HR activity going on. And so, you know, and there's an arrow there that says, oh, yes, it's gonna happen, it's gonna occur in the fourth quarter. So we just need to kind of remember that that's happening and that is going on. But you'll notice that there's this orange box out there right around April, and there's an HR piece of this project that's actually gonna roll out in April, which is talent management. Okay? On the far right, I thought it was very important to remind everybody with an arrow that at the end of August is when N4, in essence, is supposed to be finished. Contractually, you know, schedule-wise, supposed to be finished. That should be a big thing. It says, announcement, announcement, goodbye, N4 personnel, unless you have a change order. All right? The other big arrow I thought we should put out there is there has been some, a design surprise, if you will, between the way the organization is structured in GHR, HR, what's going on right now, today, human resources, benefits, and the way that the organization is structured in the new general ledger. Okay? I think there were some communication issues. The folks on the general ledger side didn't understand what the GHR folks were doing, and all of a sudden, we got a disconnect. Right? Minor, in the sense that, you know, it's not gonna create too much of an issue, but everybody needs to know that that will get resolved. But the way it's gonna get resolved is GHR's gonna run until the new payroll system goes in, and that's when there's gonna be a sort of a changeover in the organization structure, and it'll be mapped appropriately. And I just thought it was important that people should be aware of that. Okay? And that's the reason for that arrow. So what are some of the impacts of this whole rescheduling? Of course, we understand that you've got this change order, and there's gonna be an increase to N4 spending. It does require, at your point, it does require dual entry for HR, not for payroll, for HR. So any new additional personnel, any terminated personnel, retired personnel, gotta enter in both systems. Okay? And I think a team is aware of that, because you have to have a way to make sure you maintain data integrity. So there's gonna be a report, and they're gonna- So there's going to be a report and they're going to check things over, you know, between the two systems as they should. And then I, here's, here's the point about the organization, you know, got to keep that organization structure the way it matches your legacy benefits environment so that they can make it work. That's why that organization disconnect occurred. And so, but that's, it's required and that's, that's going to be okay because they know about it and they can know, they know how to fix it. Okay? We do need to remind ourselves that the legacy payroll system will continue to operate for the, until June. Okay? That has to, because you're not putting in the new system until then. So, and this, but another impact, and I've, I've mentioned this and say it again, stretching it out like this does improve the potential for successful rollouts. Okay? So we're, and the other thing that it's doing by, by doing this is it's avoiding corner cutting. The team was, was starting to go down a path of, let's cut some corners to make everything go by 1222. And so that was not a good idea, especially if you're cutting corners with regard to how often and how many tests you're going to run. Okay? More logical sequencing, let's establish a general ledger and get it in first. Great. I put this last point in bold because I, with this change, with this change, a goodly number of people are going to become available near, near mid-year. You roll out an awful lot of activity, you roll out a lot of modules at mid-year, they then become available. They, they kind of start spending less and less time on, on the project stuff. They're now day-to-day operations personnel, right around mid-year. I think that gives the county an opportunity. It gives the county an opportunity to look at a couple of organizations that are currently not in scope, but they represent a large number of people. Now, they're in scope for benefits and pay and all that sort of thing, but they're not in scope for the financial piece. Okay? The courts and HHS. Strikes me this gives the county an opportunity to do something about that. It gives the opportunity to say, you know something, we're going to turn this into an enterprise-wide system instead of just an executive-wide system. Does that make sense? So you're talking about, I don't know, pick a number, 2,000 people for the courts and HHS. Seems to me that's doable, not a huge amount of cash out of pocket. Yes, there's going to be some licensing charges, but in theory, people who kind of finish putting everything out there know what's going on, should be able to configure the software, should be able to configure the system, should be able to train HHS and the courts in a six-month period, should be able to literally target getting this done by the end of the calendar year, or 19.
So you said currently, HHS and the courts are in the system only for benefits, but not for payroll?
So, and, because they provide that information. But, but once it's in, then you've got the opportunity to roll that out, is what I'm trying to say.
Okay.
So this is what the project might look like. Okay? This is what the project might look like. So what you see up above is just the graphical representation of that chart. And I've tried to use the exact same colors that are on that chart that was presented to you Monday. At the very bottom, I've got those two line items that say, just maybe, just maybe you might be able to do that. It seems to me like you might want to ask the team whether or not they could do that. Of course, you've got to talk to the courts and HHS. So I'd like to talk a little bit about pace. I've talked to you with you before about pace. The, the, the key to success of any, of anything, getting from point A to point B, is you start going toward that point B and you take measured steps along the way and you keep moving forward with those same measured steps along the way. That's how you get to the end. You know, no journey starts without taking the first step. We've all heard that sort of thing. Well, to get to the end, you've got to keep taking those steps. I would suggest that, you know, there have been some mixed results in terms of the way this project's being organized, structured and managed. Okay? Because it's not, and we've talked about this before as well, it is not organized, managed and structured on a weekly basis as what I think it should. Because if you do things on a weekly basis, things can be seen, people can understand what they have to finish, they can be asked, did you finish? If you didn't finish, they can be asked to take care of it before Monday, you know, and what are you going to do next week? Instead, we've got, oh, this is due a month from now, this is due two months from now. Okay? We're, you know, we're, we're X percent complete. And of course, when you get to 90% complete, all of a sudden, it's still not even close to being done. Those, those things happen. Okay? So, so it seems to me like we need, you know, I wanted to look at, okay, so how are you doing? How is the project doing on a weekly basis with regard to its percent complete? How's it doing with regard to its pace? So if you look at this chart, okay, the dashlines, you know, are the original expected pace of getting, getting things done. Now, I've only got information, you know, from when, when I started looking at these things, which was in early, early this year. And by the way, this information was provided for me by, by one of, one of the new interns and he did a great job, so. So the, the red line is the actual, orange line is the work performed in terms of percent complete. You'll notice that it kind of matches the expectation because the blue line is the, the current plan of, of pace. In other words, what completions should be. And it kind of matches along just fine until, guess what, we hit recently when we replanned. And the pace dropped off, percent complete dropped off. The other thing that I noticed is that when, when the project team started changing its, its schedules and its duration, the percent complete changed. And I, and I had trouble understanding that. Okay? So it seemed like the team was focusing on the percent of the duration expended rather than the percent of the work that's completed. Because at least conceptually in my mind, if I have 100 items and I do 50, I'm 50% complete. And if I change my schedule from, I've got to do the remaining 50 next week to the remaining 50 a year from now, how does it change the percent complete? If I use duration, all of a sudden, my percent complete would go, it becomes 5%. Yet I completed 50 of the 100. So we're having, having some conversations about that. Okay? So we took a look, we took a look at the various components of the project and again, how's the percent complete tracking as they reported in their, in their project plan? And, you know, notice that GHR and benefits, which, you know, is going live shortly, you know, good, open enrollments next week, that's good news, right? It's doing pretty well. You look at the line, it's, it's tracking as the way, the way it was supposed to. That's good news. General ledger, that's tracking pretty well as well. Okay? It's, it's going to be live, turned on, launched, whatever term you want to use, January 1. Budget is close in terms of its tracking, but you can see it's a little behind. Okay? So the, the, the red line is under the blue line. Talent acquisition, not even close. Not even close. Okay? So according to the numbers in their plan. So then what about the ones that we ought to be paying attention to? The highest risk, the big issues we have, no question in 2019, is workforce management and payroll. Biggest concern, biggest risk, we got to pay attention to that. There's your history, workforce management, as we knew, I don't think it ever came close to the planned completions. So it's definitely off pace. And, but we knew that. So now there's an adjustment, everybody's replanning. The same thing with payroll. Payroll is a lot closer than workforce management, but it still is maintaining pace under what it should be, according to their numbers. So what does this look kind of from a monthly perspective? So the original plan, we can go all the way back now to the statement of work that, that was provided by INFOR. And so there's an original plan, that's your dotted line. And then if you recall, in July, there was a re-baselining. So that's the, the gray line. And then actuals, overall, still kind of below pace. So what happens with this latest replan? So you can now look and you can see this, I, I just sort of arbitrarily guessed what this thing is going to look like in, in terms of what should be accomplished to reach 100%, which basically says I've finished all the work by the end of August of 2019. That's kind of a straight line thing. It says it starts right about now. Well, so you can see that the blue line, a percent complete, that's kind of starting where that line starts. Okay? Now, now we've got, supposedly, we're going to have pace matching that line and we sure should. Pace should be. And of course, I'm going to be asking our intern to, to post that on a weekly basis. So we can track that. So what do we do about all this? The outlook for maintaining pace, you know, I'm basically suggesting that the time now for rescheduling, re-baselining and all of that stuff is past. We better not do that anymore. There should not be any reason to do that anymore. Okay? It's time to determine what size step must be made to travel to the end result. Should the team provide monthly reports to you? Absolutely, they should. Should the team be looking at themselves on a weekly basis? Absolutely, they should. Absolutely. They, they used to do weekly reports to the ESC. ESC goes to monthly meetings, what happened to the weekly reports? Okay? It's time to accomplish, to determine next steps to be accomplished next week. Not seeing that. Now, what I saw in the ESC meeting a couple of days ago, no, yesterday, is they're starting to do some of that thinking, but they're thinking in terms of October activity and November activity. You know, and that gives you an awful lot of leeway to, oh gee, we got to redo that, we're not ready for that, we're, we're 90% complete, you know. You don't get into the kind of the discipline of finish it this week, tell me what you're going to do next week, discipline, why didn't you get it done? Fix it over the weekend. Maintaining pace. It's time to move forward, the same size step every week, that's a, that's a weekly basis. It's time to track next week's accomplishments and make up the misses over the weekend. It's time to do that. It's time to do that.
Okay. We have a question.
Okay. You're, you're laying out specific points that you think need to be done on a weekly basis here. You're saying that this is, this is the goal and the objectives, which I would assume map up against some deliverable that should be becoming from INFOR.
Or internal personnel.
Internal. But ultimately, it's a combination of our deliverables and their deliverables and, and hitting these goals and objectives. And we're being asked as a body to go away from deliverable measurement for payment to flat payments per month.
We're, we're coming to that.
Yeah. But it relates to this slide right here, in my mind.
Well, and the thing that I would, I would hope.
We're going away from, you're, you're suggesting measurables as specifics, which would relate to payment, in my opinion.
As far as managing the project and managing the work, you know, billing and payment, okay, another, another, another kind of statement. But what the thing that I have looked at and I have suggested and talked about for six months is where are the, I call them work product. Okay? Because INFOR has already claimed that deliverable term. Fine. Use the term, I, fine. But what about the work product for the people that are internally in this organization? Where are they? They're not in the work plan. They're getting better, they're getting better, but there's no weekly report, there's nothing that says by team, here's what we got to do this week, here's what we're going to do next week, here's the, here's the work product and here's the person who's supposed to do it. Not just, you know, oh, well, the team is going to do it. No. Here's the person that's going to deliver that and get it done because it's only about 24 hours of work. Sounds to me like you can get that done in four days.
But that's the micro that ultimately rolls on up, ultimately into a deliverable.
Sure. Of course.
Thank you.
So you've been saying this business about weekly rather than monthly for months now. And, and to my mind, it's a no-brainer. I, I can't imagine how a project of this complexity could be, be kept on pace without weekly scheduling. And do you have any insight on why you're getting so much resistance on this?
Well, yeah, the teams will, will certainly say that they meet weekly. Okay? I mean, they do. They, and they're going to say, we've got agendas. They're going to say we have plans. The problem, the problem gets into the level of detail. Okay? The plans do not necessarily list the work product. The plans, the plans do not necessarily subdivide everything into weekly components. Now, if you don't do that in the plan, then the next place where in my mind you need to do it is you need to do it with an attached spreadsheet. As soon as you get into volumes, let's, let's use, you know, what, the thing, the chart you saw earlier about HR, I mean, you're talking about, you know, tracking 7,000 people and all that kind of thing. Of course, you're not going to put that in the work plan. However, there's nothing stopping you from a project management perspective to sit back and say, I've got this spreadsheet, I'm going to do these 50 this week. So I, so I've got them grouped. Right? And I'm going to do the next 50 the following week. And then I've got something I can say, did you do all 50 or didn't you? Right? And I can do that every week.
It's not rocket science.
I, I consider it, I consider it common sense. And if I may, let me digress for just a moment. As you know, I was, I was traveling a month ago. And I, I ended up in Reykjavik, Iceland. And I met a pastor and we were having coffee. And I, I asked this guy if I could, if I could repeat his quote. And he said, I could. He said, the problem with common sense is that it's not common enough. What else can, I mean, this stuff is common sense. Right? So, I'm sorry.
Okay. Got to move on.
Mr. Chair, I, I think just in answer to the question, it's just not, I think we've been seeing this for a year, just there's no accountability, really, not one person to, to hold this whole thing accountable. That's what keeps happening. And it's frustrating, but we can just, I think it's on track, better on track at least, but.
It, it's definitely improving from where it was, you know, year, 18 months ago or 14 months ago. Absolutely, it is. Absolutely, it is. Okay.
It's better, but it's not good enough.
It can never be, never be good enough.
Yes. Ms. Baker?
You know, I fear that if we get too much into the weeds, we begin to micromanage. And I certainly, at this position, do not want to do that. But on the other hand, we are extending this out to July and we are putting more dollars in than we thought we would, although we're still staying within the 25 million. Do you think, or can you suggest perhaps a, a recommendation that without getting into the weeds and even understanding perhaps what they're telling us, will at least allow for you to be able to see the weekly updates so that you can explain to us, because we asked for them, as part of the materials that are being created? Is that something at this juncture, at, at, in October of 2018, we have a crossroads? Do you think at this point where if we ask for in January or March of next year, it's too late? We're at a point now where we just allowed for this extension to occur? Is this the time that without getting into the weeds and micromanaging, we try to structure this better because of those reasons? because of those reasons?
Yes, I think that can take place. The INFOR team is in the process of adjusting their weekly report. They are required by contract to provide a weekly report.
Okay.
Okay? They are adjusting it. I've been talking to them and working with them about what kinds of things should be in the report. You know, and that's, you know, they're accepting some advice, which is a good thing. Now, the key becomes connecting the county's aspect to that report, which should happen and is not happening. Okay? And so that can be done. That absolutely can be done. The other piece, the other piece that needs to happen, and again, I have talked about this for a long time, that there should be a project team, administrative assistant, project team librarian, whatever term you'd like to use. Okay? It was, if you recall, I even brought it up and said, here's the original organization chart. And there's that slot. It has never been filled. Okay? The project managers that you've got working on this project right now are getting overloaded. All right? Because they're having to do some of this detailed administrative activity. There's nothing more administrative or bothersome or cumbersome than to post activity to a project plan. It's just, it is. It's cumbersome. It takes time, you know? And if you've got the project manager doing that, then they don't do, they don't manage. They are now administratively working on the project. So should there be something like that? Absolutely. Will that relieve the project managers of this administrative activity? Yes, it will. We mentioned earlier that talent acquisition is woefully not maintaining pace. Well, part of that problem is that the work plan hasn't been updated for a few weeks. Well, why would that happen? Oh, the project manager is worrying about rolling out open enrollment, as he should. It's a high priority. But if you let something like that sit, it can slide. And that's what can happen. If we're not careful, talent acquisition will not start in December like it's supposed to. Okay? So, yeah, it can be done. It can be done. But you've got to get some support for those project managers.
I think this next, I think this next slide kind of hits the nail on the head. The county people have to have enough respect for the amount of complexity involved in what we're trying to do here and take it seriously. Ms. Baker.
Just that if the INFOR contract dictates weekly reports, then we should be demanding that they do. And whether the county, you know, engages in that, their leaders engage in that is something, you know, we would, but we should at least get the INFOR.
And INFOR does. I mean, they've been issuing weekly reports per contract for, ever since the project started. That's not a, I don't think that's a concern. It's just that it's a matter of the content. And what I've been working with them on is, well, how do you, INFOR, get the county to put their pieces in? How do we get the county to have a weekly report?
Does the council, does the council have to demand weekly reports?
I would hope not.
I would hope not too, but if it's the only way to do it.
You know, it would be, it would be overkill, certainly from your perspective. And it would, and it would all of a sudden start getting people spending more time on these things than they really need to. I mean, because, you know, there's this desire to be perfect and all that kind of thing. You know, the concept of weekly reports, if you've got a decent detailed work plan, is just summarize that stuff up and you print it and you're done. I mean, it's really pretty straightforward without having to spend days trying to do it. I mean, clearly, it doesn't make sense to spend days trying to generate a weekly report.
Okay, got to move on. 58 minutes to go.
Okay. So I just wanted to, you know, kind of remind everybody, this is the same chart we've seen. And it's just, it's just a matter of saying, hey, watch out. You see all these arrows there now? We are now getting these other components over the next six to nine months. And touchpoints and interfaces is going to be a nightmare. I mean, we need to recognize this thing going on. Stuff has to fit and work together. And this is going to be a problem. Part of it is going to be the fact that you've got people working for one project manager on the financial side, people working for another project manager on the HR side, and the two have got to talk. Okay? You've got to have those things connect. And that goes back to your point about who's, who's pulling all the strings at the top. Here's an example from payroll and workforce management. And this is what the team has identified. And again, my purpose is just simply to say, it's complex. All right? So they've tried to show here and said, okay, each touchpoint, we just need to remember this. Each touchpoint either required, past tense, meaning that it's already happened, or requires currently the fact that you got to do some design work, you got to do some development work, you got to do unit testing, you got to do integration testing, and user acceptance testing on every one of them. And then you look at this and you see, you look all those arrows. And, you know, what I've circled there is, oh, well, these are the two major pieces, workforce management and payroll. They got to connect. But you'll see some other green boxes up there. Oh, general ledger. Oh, you know, current SAP system for the next, for the next six months. That's got to be connected. You know, and then so I kind of counted all the arrows. I don't know if I made the exact perfect count, but there's 32 arrows on this chart. Okay? That's just their view of workforce management and payroll interfaces to be finished and tested before they can turn the system on. And then the thing that's not on here, which I find interesting, okay, is, is there a connection with work order management? Okay? Don't know. Is there a connection with budgeting and business intelligence? These are other modules, other INFOR modules. You know, I'm guessing that there might be some touchpoints. I'm guessing that that probably makes this even more complex. Okay? So I'm just, this is, I'm just going to skip by this, but this is a matter of, this is what we've been talking about. Subdivide the work into weekly targets and accomplishments. All right? Subdivide them.
Subdivide.
So let's talk about dollars. So what's the budget impact of the reschedule? I think you've heard all that and you've seen the numbers. And the thing that I think is important to note is that about three weeks ago, the available funding on the estimates was 500,000. Now it's about a million. Okay? If it takes us to spend a little bit more money to roll out HHS and courts, I think you might have the money for it. Still within the 25 million. Still within the 25 million. Okay? I track how we're spending. Just, we can always take a look and see where we are. And we're still basically tracking. And I think this is because the project continues to stretch out. You know, your spending tends to be under what you expected to spend, because the expected spending stretches out. I took a look at the two years, 2018 and 2019. So the orange line at the bottom is your actual spending. And the reason it goes flat is because from this point onward, there is no spending. Okay? The blue line is the expected spending based on the revised updated DOIT budget from 10/12 that you saw Monday. Okay? So that's the current projected spend. The peak, that's the 1.5 million for software licensing charges that come at the end of the year. And those are prospective. They pay for the following year. So given that statement, if they pay for the following year, like I've been told that they do, then my question becomes, if I'm finished in September, why does my projected spend go up at the end? At the end of the calendar year in 2019? I mean, in the chart, I mean, in the graph, I mean, I know what number that is. That's $300,000. And the question, so if I'm, and it's software charges. So my question is, why do I have software charges in December of 2019 to pay for 2020 in the capital budget? I don't know. I've asked the question. It's being researched. It's being researched. Okay? But I have asked the question. But that's the way it shows. Okay? And you can see, if you could take a look at that million-dollar line, you know, from about the seventh month of January, which is July, you know, you're going to be spending about a million, a million a month until the first quarter of 2019. And then it'll start dropping down as INFOR folks start getting off the project. Okay? We've talked about this a few times. This is kind of an adjusted, more refined version of the payback model. Now, these are not precise numbers. They are approximate numbers, because my intent is to show you the way the model ought to look. So the very top line is cumulative cost over time, which takes into condition, takes into consideration the original $25 million capital expenditure. And then it takes into consideration remaining operating expenses per year as they climb, commonly referred to as total cost of ownership. Okay? So the next line is the cumulative benefit line. And so the concept is, I have these cumulative benefits. I have these total costs. And these are cumulative over time. When do cumulative benefits match cumulative cost? So we're looking at approximately nine to 10 years out, assuming that my approximate numbers are reasonable from an order of magnitude perspective. Okay? That's the best that the county probably is going to be able to do. But that's using cumulative benefits, recognizing that there are three fundamental components to benefits. Okay? The largest component to cumulative benefits is productivity improvement. Okay? And those were all numbers that were presented to you by Public Works and so forth. Then there's cost avoidance. We don't have to spend money on that. Okay? And then the last one is literally cost savings. That's the hard dollar one. Okay? You know, the best example, at least, you know, at least very quickly, is the numbers that were there for information technology DOIT. Basically says, oh, we don't need that anymore. So we don't have to spend money on that. That hard dollar savings. This could also be some personnel things. Okay? But the point is, it's not significant in relationship to the rest of the numbers. If you were to try to pay back this system using true, detailed, hard cost savings dollars, it might take you 30 years. And by then, the system has changed and morphed into, who knows what it's going to be and how many different upgrades you're going to go through. Because the thing that's not here, that you don't see in that cum cost line, is what do I do about, you know, a $5 million upgrade seven years out? That kind of thing could happen. Or in 20 or 2021, when, you know, you've got some kind of a minor upgrade to the product and it's going to cost you half a million dollars. Those numbers are not here. And those affect the total cost of ownership. So you end up in this moving target kind of world. Let's talk a little bit about assuring data integrity. I included this in last month's report, and I just wanted to give you some updates. You know, we talked, we talked about the fact that the Department of Internal Audit has had some concerns, as they should, and talked about the fact that, you know, they needed to see and they wanted to understand that INFOR has provided its externally-prepared security and control assessment documents. Okay? And they, so the message here is, they got them. So that's good news. Okay? The other thing that they talk about is, the Department of Internal Audit talks about the fact that there's not a disaster recovery plan. Okay? And as the next page will tell you that this is what the state auditor has said about the disaster recovery plan. And it says that the county has not had one since 2010. And my understanding is the most recent state auditor's report repeats that, that there is not a disaster recovery plan. Now, there are two disaster recovery plans that should be in place. One of them is INFOR's, because you're running things on INFOR. So they should have a disaster recovery plan. And they, and they have provided that now. So it's there. But you also have this issue of a need for the disaster recovery plan for county technology. Okay? Which is the infrastructure and the devices and all that kind of thing, which you still have to have in order to run the system in the cloud. That does not exist. Okay? And so my message there is no movement on that one. Now, is there time to generate a disaster recovery plan between now and the end of 2019? You bet there is. It's just a matter of whether or not someone's willing to go out there and plan it, get the funding, and take care of it. The reports that they received, and I just wanted to highlight this for you. This is a summary that the DIA prepared. And all I'm wanting to say is, oh, good. The reports said unqualified. So therefore, the external assessor was satisfied that controls were reasonable and adequate and in place for INFOR's environment, which was good news. Just reminding, okay, and then I put this in here and I put it in bold at the bottom to say, oh, well, wait a minute, there's a piece that we were missing. And that piece was, INFOR runs the system on Amazon's cloud environment. So in essence, we now have several layers just to get to us. Okay? So they did not have Amazons and kept raising a flag. And so I have updated it this morning. This morning, Department of Internal Audit received copies of the appropriate control-oriented reports called SOC reports, types one, two, and three. They've received those. They're looking at them. Good news is that they have received those and we do have them. And I've seen the opinion from Ernst &amp; Young, and it was unqualified. So I saw that. So that was good. So let's take a look at the outlook. Just got to try to breeze through this, because these are all major kind of points. We just need to remind ourselves there's very little budget left. We've got about a million dollars. Okay? And I'm already suggesting you might want, there's a way you can spend it. Okay? Everybody's got to be all in. It's now time, I can't, can't say that strong enough. Everybody's got to be all in. The touchpoints must be made to work. Watch out for that little bit of fire. Okay? All the touchpoints must be made to work.[1721.33] So a lot of, a lot of moving pieces there. We are now approaching, we've, we've done, we've done, we're doing open enrollment. So employees are out there, they're all giving feedback. And by the way, the feedback that I've heard so far has been relatively fine. Are there going to be glitches? Of course there are. But on the whole, we're in good shape. But now you're, you've got to recognize that you're, you, you're exposing yourself from a, from a validation perspective, from a verification perspective, much broader. Okay? So you've got requisitions that are going to touch a lot of folks. You've got time reporting, it's going to touch a lot of folks. Paychecks, purchase orders, payments, billings, expense reimbursement, all of these things touch a lot of folks. And so we've got to recognize that we have to pay attention to that, we have to worry about the training, we have to worry about the change management, we have to make sure that folks get information and know ahead of time when there is going to be a surprise. Right? My past client example, putting in payroll, they knew there were 12 differences between the way the new system is calculating pay gross to net and the way the old one did. They knew. They identified them, they called them known differences, and they published them. And they told everybody, this is the way it's going to be, this is the way it is, please understand. What they neglected to tell everybody is that the time clocks rounded differently, rounded hours differently, and that caused a problem. Okay? So they, for instance, I, I'm pretty sure that people recognize that there are different ways of interpreting the union contracts. And the county for sure is going to make sure that those interpretations match the contracts, not the way it's always been done. So that could create this difference that everybody's got to be ready for. Okay? Just quite a few puzzle pieces are left to fit together. They've got to fit together. So what I've listed on here is the, is the process string. Those have to fit together. If they go from one module to another, they must fit together. And so when we do the user acceptance testing, we need to be looking at these process strings from beginning to end, so that everybody then is comfortable that it's working. Does that make sense? So very key thing that people should pay attention to the next nine months. There's, there's a need for maintaining data integrity. All right? So we've already said, for, for nine months now, we're going to have dual entry on, on HR. So you, we've got to be careful, we've got to recognize that we could have a John Smith spelled with an I and John Smythe still spelled differently. That can happen. Need, need to mitigate that, need to control it. Same kind of thing when you start talking about work orders, conceivably, you might have 44 work orders, 44 hours on a work order for John Doe, but the pay on the time clock is 40 hours. Got to work that one. Don't want that to happen. We are now in the mode of production environment and development environment happening at the same time. Okay? So you're kind of, the metaphor I've got here, there's, the garage is ready, right? We've got a car going in the garage. But the house, we're still framing the house. We're still framing that house. Okay? So we, we got to recognize that there are different rules, policies, procedures, as well as help desk and problem resolution and escalation. Those are all going on right, should be, going on for HR, benefits, and work, and work order management. Those are, those are in essence, give or take a week now, in production. So we've got to have people working that stuff and recognizing it's different from being on the development team on the, okay? So we need to be careful about moving targets. You know, as soon as you extend the project timeline, you immediately open it up for someone to say, well, what about, we have time? Now, I'm talking about changes to the scope of what you say is in scope. So it's making a change to the way you calculate pay. I am not talking about, oh, by the way, let's roll this out to HHS and to courts. That's an enhancement, and that's not, you know, that's, that's something that you've got, I think you've got the funding to do. Okay? But we got to be careful, the collective bargaining unit in this particular time period could renegotiate a contract. I mean, that could create a change. Okay? And then we've talked about the fact that, you know, you extend this thing, your contractor may not be able to keep their subcontractors onboard.
Any questions before we get into recommendations? Ms. Baker?
Yes, going back to, to your chart on the, the template of the payback model.
Yes.
So this payback model that you're showing us is the 25 million investment and the 15 million operating equalling to 40. Am I right in understanding that?
Yes.
So do we have, or can we create a model template that backs out the 25 million and gives us a side to side to show that this is what we can expect the ERP system to do with the improvements that we've made because of initiating it? And show that it was in fact, you know, a good system to, to bring, and, and show that over the next nine years? And maybe perhaps where it's paying for itself in operating only?
Sure. Okay, have you done?
The second question I had is the, given that the state auditor is, has issued a letter for this lack of IT disaster recovery plan, what kind of money are we looking at in order to create that? And I know that's not included in the 25 million.
No, yeah, no, it's not. Nor should it be because it, because it really applies to the entire structure, the entire organization. So it, a lot, a lot of variables, a lot of things that, you know, I really don't, don't have a handle on. I would presume that you probably would, would outsource that. I mean, so you probably would, would want to issue some type of RFP to do that. Depending on, you know, the, the scope, because the scope, you know, can, you can sit there, sit back and say, well, do I want a disaster recovery plan for the current mainframe and the current legacy environment? You get into those kinds of questions, which, you know, all that stuff exists, all right? So, and it'll be around for at least another couple of years for sure. You know, so, so again, you're into, what's the scope? If you say the scope is everything, it's going to be multiples of 100,000?
So less than a million?
Oh, yeah.
500,000?
Probably.
Just for budgeting?
If it's every, if it's everything. If it's everything. You know?
Thank you.
Okay. Please proceed.
Sure. Let me go find where I was. So, you know, some recommendations. We've already talked about this, but, you know, certainly I think that the, the deliverables of N4 should be connected to the monthly payments. I mean, so that, which is, I think, what we, we, we talked about earlier. So the bottom line is, you know, council should expect the zero dollar change order, and I, my understanding is there's going to be a zero dollar change order that will be issued after change order 14 is approved. And its intent is to say, here, here are the actual monthly payments, November through August, that N4 is requesting to be made, and they would be a set fixed amount for the month. It will vary. It will probably go down, it'll start at about a million and go down. And so, so that, that will be happening. We, I understand that N4 has already allocated all of their deliverables from their original statement of work with whatever adjustments are necessary. And they've already allocated those to November, December, and they've already allocated them. So they, they had to have done that to come up with the numbers. So I think all this, all I think what should happen is that you, you probably should sit there and say, well, just simply make it part of the change order. I mean, that, attach it, refer to it, however you want to do that, so that you literally, and the team can literally say, for November, these are the deliverables that N4 will provide for December and so on. OBM project manager, a project budget oversight, the council should expect OBM to concur monthly with the project team's spend projections through the end of the project. Okay? Council should expect OBM to prepare the monthly summary budget versus actual spend analysis. Council should expect OBM to concur with the project's cost savings projections. Using the project team's projections for productivity improvement and cost avoidance along with the OBM's concurred cost savings and concurred actual expenditures, council should expect OBM, I have a typo there, I'm sorry, OBM to develop an updated project payback analysis, so that they can do that chart.
Okay.
Okay? Clearly, the, the team, you know, Public Works, HR, you know, finance, they're the ones that should generate the, any, any productivity improvements, which they, you know, they already have, and cost avoidance. I mean, you know, that, they're the ones that need to generate that because that has to do with their, their operating, their projections of how they're going to operate. Okay? But the cost savings, that gets into literally pricing things. When somebody says, you know, that goes away, then I presume Office of Budget and Management has the detailed information for that. Maintaining pace. We've talked about it. I'm just restating this as a recommendation. So the, the project team should be updating its activities weekly. They should. Okay? For sent completes, ought to be focused on work completed. Should prepare a weekly progress report that includes completions and expectations for next week. Replanning and rescheduling should never interfere with the posting of weekly results of the project plan. Now, this gets back to, if we can get someone to support the project managers, then they don't have to do this administrative task. I mean, if they have to do some replanning and scheduling, that takes that, that takes the project manager's expertise. Writing down what John Doe says they've finished is fairly administrative. Freezing design, and I think you heard some of this Monday, and I certainly concur. Prevent a moving target and freeze design for each of the remaining modules to be implemented as soon as possible, and you've got to make sure you use your requirements traceability matrix. That ties everything back to what you requested and what you wanted to do, as you should. Enforce the design freezing in order to, for N4 to complete its work on a timely basis. N4 is going to have, continue to have a problem when they have to do something with a moving target. I mean, they, you know, we, we're at the stage now where you can't afford any more moving target kinds of problems. Just lock it down. And, and the team has already said this internally. You lock it down and you basically say, look, this is what we're going to put in. If we have to make a minor change, really minor, maybe we can do it. But if we have to make anything that might take some time and affect the schedule, I call them post-go-live enhancements. Okay? That's what I call them. I mean, it's, it's something you're going to do afterward. And when you do that, you're basically saying, oh, that means that the production people, the people who are supposed to support this thing, they're going to work on it. Project team says, I got to get this done. Makes sense?
Yes.
So I do not be afraid to identify post-go-live changes and enhancements. The last one I want to talk about is transitioning to production. I guess I'm, I'm thinking that the current organizational environment is rather murky. And we talked about this a few months ago, because a few months ago, the, the organization chart that was presented to you, they, the team alluded to it as being the project organization chart, when actually, it was the DOIT ERP production support organization chart. It was, what are we going to do and how are we going to use our people on a permanent basis going forward? So we talked about, well, wait a minute, wait, who's working on the project? Unless have a project organization chart, this is big, it's significant, it's $25 million. We need to have a project manager, you know, all those things we talked about several months ago. So now it's continuing to be murky. And the reason it's continuing to be murky, because now all of a sudden, things are going into the production world. So now we need new policies and procedures on how do we stay on top of this on a day-to-day basis. Okay? That's in play. That's what's going on. But now we've got to ask ourselves, well, who is doing this? Because if you, because you've got people on the project team that are IT people, IT people, on the project team, they're dedicated to the project, and now all of a sudden, well, are you, aren't you supposed to be doing this production stuff? And quite frankly, I think that should be clarified, it should be clear. We should know exactly who's on production and who's doing production, and we should know exactly who's still on project. And I certainly think that the, the, the split should be clear in the sense that the individuals are full-time, not part-time. You start getting into splitting time and you start immediately getting into issues with how much time do you spend on production, how much time do you spend on the project, and something slides. Something slides. Okay? You can make changes to this whole thing six months from now. But, but right now, it needs to be clear. Okay? And then, and then the other thing that's not clear, because I have asked this question and have not gotten a good answer, so, on, from a production perspective, who calls N4? I mean, because N4 now, for production, for, for, for work order management and for GHR benefits and core HR, those three modules are virtually in production. Therefore, the organization that literally is responsible for operating that stuff is N4, because we have outsourced that to them. Ergo, who calls them when there's a problem? Okay? Who calls them? And then when there's a problem you can't solve, how do you escalate? Those are production questions, and they need to be resolved sooner rather than later. And on that note...
I have a question.
Okay. Do you need me to go back to a slide?
No.
Okay.
It's a question that you've usually answered in, in, in your report, but it's not explicitly stated here, so I'm going to ask for you to explicitly state it, which is that I'd like to know, what information do you request that, do you recommend that we request that the administration include in their next monthly report, which will be the October report, which is due about November 8th?
Well, in, in addition to what you're getting, it seems to me that this is the time for the administration to be able to say, here is the staffing, the non-IT staffing laid out by month that we're going, we're, we're expecting to use. I mean, that, that basically kind of puts them in a position where the, the project management team has to go to the, to the using departments and has to say, look, I got to get it now. You know? And, and it should be out there, there's no reason why it can't be out there. And then by you asking for that and saying, I just want to know every month, you know, you say you're going to have this many people, are they full-time, and then how many of them are using, and how many of them are actually working on it? And then they, if they report that to you, then that's a good thing. Okay? The other thing that I think would make an awful lot of sense, again, and, and in addition to what you're, what you're getting on a monthly basis, is to have some, a, a, how can I say this? A, a summary of the project positioning and progress that's based on their detailed work plans. What you have been getting is you have been getting a, in essence, a restatement. It's, it's, somebody prepared it and put it in a, in a spreadsheet and colored the lines. Okay? They have the capability and they can literally summarize what's in their detailed plans using the project management tool that, that it's in, and simply summarize it. What that does is it means, oh, you mean we have to use it? Oh, we have to keep it current? Oh, we have to, you know, that's all, that's what happens. As opposed to, as opposed to, well, we're going to put it on this spreadsheet, and, you know, we're going to color the lines, and we're going to put some, we're going to put some diamonds in there. And what happens, and has happened, is it doesn't get updated. Because it's too easy to cut and paste.
So are you suggesting these detailed work plan summaries be reports of what they've accomplished during the last month, or, or should they be reports week by week of what they plan to accomplish during the next month? Or both?
What that, what, what would be key? What that, what, what would be key is, is for you, okay, because you're looking at it on a summary basis, is for you to be looking at the percent completes.
Uh-huh.
I mean, that's, that's, is it changing or is it not changing?
Uh-huh.
I mean, you know, it, it drives me nuts to sit there and say, well, you're, you're telling me on your little bar chart here, on this, this colored bar chart, that you're going to complete something in December. But, but when I look at the plan, it says 0% complete. You mean, you haven't even started it? I mean, you know, by you expecting that or asking for that coming from their plan, that enforces the discipline necessary to make it a meaningful report at the, at the, at the summary level. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay. I mean, it, it, it's very doable on their part. It does, it's not going to require a lot more. I'm back to, okay, get an administrative assistant, enough of this, you know, post that stuff and get that information out there. So make it real. I mean, I looked at one example where, where the top level of the, of the plan said December 3rd, 2018. And then underneath it, the component said, oh, it starts in January of 2018 and ends in May of 2018. Really? You know, but that, why is that? People don't have time, got project managers that are, that are, you know, forced into, oh, I've got to worry about this, but you also want me to do this, this administrative stuff. It makes sense? So I think that would help a lot, okay? I mean, you know, I don't think you, you need to look at how are they managing things and, you know, because managing things, in my mind, managing is, what'd you do? What are you going to do? Yeah? Okay, I don't know if that necessarily needs to be in your purview, but, but boy, to sit there and say, you know, are you moving? Are you making progress? Yeah, I think you should be able to ask those kind of questions. And that percent complete does it. The very simple, straightforward kind of thing.
Questions by my colleagues, Council President Brady.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and Zig, thank you so much for your presentation and for helping us try to provide oversight over this complicated project. You know, we have this dilemma of what our role, of what our role is. You know, as the councilwoman expressed earlier, you know, we don't want to or, or have the ability to or the time to be in the weeds on this whole project, that's not really what we're supposed to do. And, but, there's got to be a stick somewhere. And if the administration, for whatever reason, is not aggressively pushing the project along the timeframe and that it needs to be pushed at, then the council, you know, has a, has a role to help be that stick. And, and, you know, I think that we've gotten enough information that we need to work together to try to determine how the council can be a stick, because either, either we're doing all this for nothing, or we're going to, or we're going to be, or we're going to be more aggressive about what we expect. And so I appreciate the work that you've done, but I think that, and I think that the council, you know, is reaching a point where it's, it's got the big picture here in many ways. But I think we're looking for, what do, what do we do with it, given our role as a legislative body? And I think, you know, that's something that we need to work on together.
We, it has been said that, that the way to complete a large and very complex project is to break it down into very small steps and then figure out when each of them has to be done and who has to do them. And I think that, that we need more of that to take place, and, and, and we need to ask the kind of questions that, that kind of ensure that the administration respects the complexity and, and deals with this at, at a sufficiently detailed and granular level so that we know that we're making progress on a weekly basis. I think that's kind of what we need. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. Any other questions, Ms. Simon?
Just a comment, thank you for everything you've done to make this a little bit clearer for me at least. But what did become extremely obvious to me today is the need, I mean, it's a lack of support, it's a lack of the, just one person holding this whole group accountable with time. Administrative support, it's not there. Somebody to, to be able to administer this, because everybody has dual roles, they're not, they don't have enough support. And even for our boards and commissions, you know, we just did a charter review, we had somebody there who was assigned as an administrative person doing those things. And, and for this large project, we don't even have some, one point person to handle this. And, and that's something, as a council, I think we can see there's some money, I don't think this is a huge expense, but I really want to see that we employ somebody in that position full-time to move this along. So that would just be a comment I have, that's not a complicated thing to do if we can. But even every board or commission has more than this multimillion dollar project has.
My understanding is there, there actually is an attempt to, to, to obtain that type of individual.
Yeah, wow.
The question is, well...
What century?
Why would it take this long? You know, and, and, you know, the, the other question is, do you really have to have a permanent employee? Because that can also be a contract person, I, you know, and getting a contract person is a lot easier than getting a permanent employee.
It doesn't have to be an employee.
Yeah.
But somebody needs to be in that seat.
Yes, Ms. Baker?
Just one comment also, you know, when asked directly, we had our meeting on Monday, if after this additional funding and a new deadline, is, are those leaders in place with the project team? Absolutely. At a place where they feel they can implement this without hesitation? Their answer is yes. Their answer is, I should not see any more red flags that say that this is going down a road that we can't determine how it's going to turn out. They are in a place, and, and it was from at least two, and they all said unanimously, they are on the same page, that this project is on a pace where they can stand behind it with the additional funding and time, and that we should not run into more difficulties to get the project done. So, you know, we, if you weren't here and we were hearing that, we would be in a place where we would not be questioning anything. We would be in a place where we would be thinking, great, you know, we don't like the delay, but it sounds like you're on task and we don't really need to be asking any more questions. So I, I guess first of all, I'm glad you're here, certainly opened my eyes to a few things I thought were settled. And secondly, I guess I will ask you as our, our consultant on this, what do you think of that position? That the people that are on the project team at this point in time feel that they are on task, on schedule, and that they don't anticipate, everything is, you never know, but at this point in time, they anticipate this project to go as planned? Do you, I mean, you know, where are you in that? And what percentage would you say you're on board with them to?
I will, I think, repeat my statement that the, the reschedule improves and increases the project's opportunity for success. No question in my mind that it does do that. But I, but, but as you, as you probably heard, and maybe it wasn't, I didn't maybe connect it correctly, I am, I am still skeptical about whether or not the non-IT personnel will, will be as involved as they probably need to be. And if that happens, I mean, if, if they are, they continue to be part-time, partial, and again, I'm, I'm speaking mainly with the team leaders, I mean, that, that sort of thing. If that continues, and, and we can just, we can just pick, I can just picture, everybody said, oh, we're going to be okay, you know, we're doing general ledger April 1, but the audit's starting right now, okay? And so all those financial personnel are going to be, well, we got to work on the audit, you know, it's important, we got to work on the audit. And they've said that before, they said that last year. I mean, payroll personnel will, you know, have, have continually said, we got, got to do, got to do, run payroll, yeah, I agree. Now, things have been done to alleviate some of that. In other words, there is now a consultant that's been brought in, that's a, that's a sort of a backfill, that's a payroll person and, and so forth. A consultant has been brought in to, to work on workforce management. So, so there's some positive things, and I think these things, along with the, with the stretched time, you know, positions the team to, to, to take that positive stance, which they should do, okay? It's their plan, they should do that. Yeah, I, is it, is it, is it going to succeed? I think the odds are very great in its favor. If I were to put a percentage on it, I'd, it, I, I can't make it 100%. The reason I can't make it 100% is because I'm skeptical about whether or not all those team leaders would literally now, not, not, because I, I can just see them, they're all going to say, well, you know, we're not doing testing on this until February. I'm like, no, now, we got to get, because it's going to take time. So I'm skeptical about that. So therefore, I can't say 100. What number is it? I mean, is it, is it in the 80, 90%? Probably, okay? But that, I really don't, can't say much more than that.
So I'm, I'm going, I'm going to weigh in on this a little bit and say, that you presented 55 slides this morning, and one of them hit me like a ton of bricks, and it was the one where you said that so far, we've only completed 10% of the project, and we have 90% to go, and, and the 10% that we've done is the parts that are somewhat isolated and not, not so complex, and not too many interactions, and the ones we have to go are complex and have lots of interactions with each other and lots of moving parts. And, and I think this is a very complex project, and, and things are bound to happen, and some things have happened, and, and I think if we're going to get to, to the finish line, there has to be respect for the complexity and difficulty of the undertaking, probably more respect than there is at this moment. I, I think that it's good that people believe in themselves and believe that they can get this to the finish line, but I think there needs to be respect for the difficulties that are involved and, and a willingness to do that fine-grained detail, weekly planning that we're talking about. And I think, I think we need that to get there.
Yeah.
Other questions or comments? Well, you have a few extra minutes, and we wish you safe travels, and thank you very much for your service.
You're entirely welcome.
Is there any miscellaneous business? Hearing none, there being nothing further that holds our attention, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for hanging in there.